Alright, just so everyone knows, the meeting is being recorded. And we're just gonna jump right on in. So, we've got a review of the reopening plan, the updated reopening plan. Wayne, you gonna walk us through that? How do you want to do that?
I think one way to begin the conversation would be to take it page by page. We did, just if there are no questions on page one, for example, or page two, and then if we make some edits, you can move the document at the end, as is. The first five or six pages are supposed to be uploaded to the DOE, but it's not really substantial relative to the plan. So I think most of the questions will begin on page six. You know, as far as our plan. So, we met a couple of times. We tried to, you know, add detail relative to action. That we tried to look at your recommendations from our last meeting and include them. So, and Mr. Bogey will be here momentarily. He was, so if there are any elementary school questions, I'll do my best, but...
I can buy you one minute because I forgot to do the, I forgot to do our obligatory stuff for our remote member. I've got to make sure that I have, Julia, you can hear me, right?
Yes, I can.
Alright, so Julia's attending remotely. So Julia, I will need you to, please, if you don't mind for the record, state your name, your location, who you are with, and the reason for attending remotely, please.
Julia Killily. I am in Avon, Connecticut, by myself. And unfortunately, I needed to attend remotely today due to the fact that I'm out of town.
Alright, cool. And when we do voting, I will need to do a roll call vote for you. So I'll just, you know, call, call and confirm your vote.
Perfect.
Alright, sorry, Wayne, I forgot to do that. I'm like, I'm forgetting something. I couldn't remember what it was. So is everyone okay with Wayne's proposal? We'll go through a page by page? Alright.
Yes.
Yeah, everyone, please make sure to talk to the microphone on Wednesday. Because we weren't like, right now, so, alright, Wayne, it's back to you.
Okay, so page one, and this is the plan, safe return to in-person instruction. This is just the, check the box, and this is part of the expectation around the American Rescue Plan and the SIR three. So, we just need to upload it, but it really doesn't entail meet the meat of the plan. So if there are no questions on one, we have four, five boxes checked, yes.
Do you guys want to go over the checklist or just want to jump right into the plan?
I think just the plan. I mean...
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Julia, are you okay jumping right into the plan and skipping the checklist?
Absolutely.
Wayne, is that okay with you?
Absolutely. I would, I would hope to do that, but...
Yep, cool. Yeah, so I'll just jump right into academic recovery.
Yep. So I guess I would like, Ian, if you can address the middle high, and I'll do my best with the elementary.
Thank you. I hope everybody can hear me. We, we intend to have a scheduled middle school intervention period, but that's for students in grades six, seven, and eight. That'll be the first period of the day. It combines nicely with the advisory program to help kids get ready and shifted and ready to learn and get into new learning in their academic classes. That intervention period is going to give us a chance to do some serious assessment and discover where the learning gaps are. It's going to be a flexible schedule. So as we find out what kids really need, who, who needs enrichment, who needs backup learning, we can tailor that. And I have 10 teachers scheduled to deliver those intervention periods. And this is something, by the way, the middle school teachers asked for. So I have to commend the teachers for thinking ahead. This is something we were going to need. So that's in the schedule. And with the two interventionists that we have, the math interventionists and the literacy interventionists, we want to use them in a lot of flexible, different ways. Not only will they help with the intervention in the middle school, but we can use them in the high school, either for team teaching, co-teaching, or to ask kids from study hall to come into, I've given them room to work with kids who might need help, especially if a teacher says, "What do I do with students who are way behind in their reading level? How can I help them catch up?" We've got somebody there to help them. So that's for every kid in the high school as well as middle school. The late bus, that's part of the SIR funds, that's going to be a huge help for kids who need to stay after school, especially looking down the road if somebody's out sick and they need to have extra time to work with a teacher. That late bus is going to be really helpful. And again, we still have the homework club for those kids, especially targeted assistance through Title I. They're really focusing on using the New Hampshire SAS data to help those kids this year. So that's a lot of academic recovery right there for us.
Great.
And at the elementary school, we had a great, you know, a lot of students participate in summer school. So we did quite a bit with summer school, and some of that had to do with social emotional learning piece. We're also changing our model with Title I, kind of a push-in model with Title I and with some special needs to make sure that we are not losing any direct instruction along with the support we're giving students in reading. We also have math interventionists, and we're doing after-school programming in math. So, start, I think between the tutoring, using SIR funds to hire the interventionists, and pushing down or pushing in to the classroom, Title I services and special need services. We'll still be providing some direct, one-on-one services for special need students. But they're, we're working hard to make sure that we don't miss any direct instruction, especially in reading and math, to help with academic...
Did you want to take questions on that? Or did you want, because I know the athletics and co-curricular go from page one to page two. Do you want to do that afterwards, or see if there's any questions?
Sure. If there's any questions, and if there's something that really is complicated, I'll probably refer to Joe later on. I got, I have, you know, the explanation from Joe, but I don't have everything going on, let's say, in an individual grade level. That level I don't have.
Does anyone have any questions, that first section of academic recovery? Ollie?
Nope.
Jim?
No.
Good. Julia, did you have anything on that first section, academic recovery?
No, I do not. Thank you.
And I don't have any questions either. So we can move on to athletics and co-curricular?
I think Sam is with us, but Ian, you may want to lead the conversation.
Alright, so Mr. Killily has developed the athletic plan for fall sports. It is in Appendix A. So we've attached it in your document. And Mr. Killily, if you'd like to speak to it?
I am on. Unfortunately, the NHIA is not giving us a lot of guidance. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I did talk to them on the phone along with several other ADs. And they're, they're trying to go back to as normal as possible. So, as I said in the meeting last week, the regional schedule is not an option because they're already scheduled with their divisions. So I would, I think that it would just be the best if we just went back to the way it was before. I understand that it's unprecedented times and, but it's just, I'm not getting much guidance.
Anything else on this area? Because we talked, we've talked about field trips, dances, homecoming, all of that. We talked about that in the section two, so we're all together.
Do you want to take any questions on athletics first, while Sam's here?
Do you guys have any, because we also have these old athletics thing at the end, or we can just do it all together? Do you guys want to just talk about that briefly now?
I mean, we can. I have, I have two questions. I mean, it's another agenda item, but suppose, so we can, yeah, I don't mind just jumping in. It doesn't really, it's not addressed in this little section, but, alright, so I have just two questions. And I agree with, you know, that, well, you know, obviously, NHIA is given no guidance, and that's very disappointing to say, just go back like pre-COVID and, you know, them traveling all over the state when it's not pre-COVID, you know, we're still in COVID. So, so that's very disappointing. But my two specific questions, and it kind of falls under, I guess, the transportation section of the reopening plan too, is that, so on the buses, I looked at the NHIA website and, you know, we're, it looks like we're pretty much scheduled for games at the same time. So I assume that means we're going to be having the girls and the boys taking the same bus again?
Yes.
Okay, so how, so how would distancing, I mean, I know you have to wear masks on the bus because that's the federal rule right now, but how will distancing work when we have them all on one bus?
I have booked as many coach buses as I can so that we can space out more often. I think I'm still working with the bus company to see how many that they can get on. And, and we, and like you said, we are going to wear the masks and we're going to separate as far as possible. As in baseball and softball in the spring, if we have to, we will take the vans if they're available.
Okay. Yeah, and there's no guidance about distancing, I don't think, like there was last year, you know? Everything's down to three feet now and stuff, so, okay, thanks, Sam. And then my only other question about sports was, and it might be implied, and maybe I just, you know, didn't catch, but the mask, if, if we approve a mask, masking indoors, if we approve that tonight, and so like the weight room and stuff like that, I mean, I understand that the locker room, if you're using it to shower, which I didn't think, where they ever shower, anybody ever showers in our locker rooms anymore, but like the weight room, because, and, and stuff like that, because I know it's not a big area, will they be masking?
Yes, absolutely. I, I do want to let you know that not many of our athletic teams use those during the season. So I think that if, if we are going to use them, we will definitely put masks on them. But I don't think the soccer team will use them as much as many people think they do.
Okay. Yeah, that, like I said, that's all I have. And I just want to say, you know, thank you for putting a plan together, you know? Mostly it's last year's, but then tweaks, and, and yeah, it is just unfortunate. Like, I really don't like the fact that we're going to be traveling all over the state, but, you know, that's, that's not, that's not your fault. You did your job, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, questions? Julia, do you have any questions on this one?
I don't. Thank you.
And the only question that I have on athletics and co-curricular, which would be the same as when we get to field trips, is it looks like this is all going to be admin discretion. So you guys aren't going to be coming to us on any of this stuff, or?
So the policy we have regarding field trips, of course, there's any new field trip, but we could certainly, as part of the revision, we could, we could bring to the field trip requests each month. We have enough time usually to take care of those. If the board wants to see those, given the circumstances.
Well, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not necessarily saying that we have to. I just know that we approved all of these things, you know, last year.
Yeah.
So I'm just, you know, making sure I'm reading it correctly, and that we're not being asked to approve all of this stuff this year. And if that's the case, I just, you know, would like to make sure the board is okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're alright?
Yeah.
Jim, you're alright?
Yeah.
Julia, you okay with that?
I guess I'm not understanding the question. Okay, with the administration making the call or making sure it comes to us every month?
With the administration making the call. Last year, last year, we had to approve all this stuff ahead of time. And so this year, they're proposing that, you know, they make the call, so...
I'm fine with that.
Alright, if everyone else is, then I'm in as well.
My only thing would be is if, if things get really out of hand, maybe, we would get, yeah, like, like, you know, the numbers are really, I mean, hopefully, you know, that kind of thing. Just use your, if it's something that you think the public is going to ask us about, do you know what I mean? You know, give us a heads up.
Okay. That makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
And we've already talked about some trips we probably won't be recommending this year. Most things change dramatically, so...
And I wanted to speak, because I know it's not the, I know it's not the sports plan per se, but I want to make sure that we're also on the same page. I know there was some question last year that the practice and game schedule is administration, administration prerogative, that that's not coming to us, right?
Yeah, actually, now that you bring that up, my only question was, I think the, the question last year was when things were remote because we had cases in the school.
Yeah, I think there was something like that.
There was a question around that.
I think it came to the superintendent, if I can remember it. And then if there was a question, that he would then bring it to the board.
So what is, and it might be in the sports plan that I'm not remembering, but what is, I guess it's if it, if it affects members of the team, right? Then things would, would be disrupted. Is that what it was?
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But otherwise, the practice and game schedule is the AD, the principal, the superintendent.
Yeah.
Alright, just to make sure everyone is on the same page with that. Alright. Are we ready to move on?
So attendance would be the next section. That's probably the best way to condense the conversation. Ian, any update for the board on attendance?
I just want to assure people that we, we do expect kids to be in school. If they're sick, they should stay home. And regardless of the reason for illness, anytime a student is out, we allow them two days to make up essential work. I mean, there's a lot that you miss when you're not in the classroom with, with your social peer group, but we want kids to make up the essential work. They have two days for each day they're out. And again, with that late bus, I think that will be a big help if they want to stay after school and they get healthy and work with a teacher. We do send work home too, if kids are well enough at home to work, but we're not offering remote as an option. They can't log into class and watch the teacher teach. So that's, that's going to be the difference.
And Joe, anything at the elementary that is different?
No, nothing to say. You know, make up work sometimes. We'll take a special week. Sometimes we'll take the special maybe, but you know, we talk to the parents about...
Sometimes it'll take the specials time to make some things up, but it all depends on, you know, working with the parents on, and the children on how to make up the work as best we can. And then, of course, there's always the after-school program. Some of them are involved in that anyway, so there's time to make things up. That's kind of, you know, how, it's basically how we would handle an absence in the past, that it would be work through the teacher.
Is there a question on attendance?
No, Ian, Ian kind of answered the one question that I had, that we would still send work home if they're, or if they're quarantining, like if they have to quarantine, we would just, yeah.
Jim, questions? No. Julia, questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm good as well. If you want to move on to communication.
So, communication, following the same plan we've had, the board's had a good, I think it's been a good district communication plan. You know, it was disrupted a little bit this summer when we didn't meet for a few weeks and there was an issue. But I think it's the way to go, and I think the board has community representatives communicating to the community. We welcome that effort, so we have no recommendations for changes.
Other questions?
No.
You're good. Jim, questions? Julia, questions?
Good, thank you.
And my only question is, you know, are we going, do we like have a, like, set schedule as far as like, when are we going to be sending updates? Like I heard on the radio yesterday, I think it was yesterday, you know, like, key's going back with masks. And what they're going to do is they're going to send out a message every Friday and update on the transmission and stuff, and are masks required for that next week, or are they optional, or whatever. So we can do anything along that line.
So, so we haven't talked about that. We have talked about using the board meeting dates to determine if there's any issues that look to be imminent, in which case we would come up with a plan, like Monday says. As long as we're in the substantial and continue to be in, you know, the moderate substantial side of spread, we feel it's probably not, not practical in regards to having students get up. And is it going to snow out today? We're going to have a snow day? Or we're going to have a mask? We're going to have no school day? So we want to maintain the continuity as long as we can, unless it changes, unless the spread changes up or down, in which case we would want a message. So the board meets at least once a month, you know, has been. And we would use that to update the community. And that way, you've got the whole board there. I think it's easier and we can say, here's what we see.
And we did indicate that in the big plan on Article Five, was about the monthly board meeting, communication to the public.
Yep, and I saw that.
So I think, I think really...
And I suppose if something becomes dire, we can always meet earlier.
The board's been very good at calling emergency meetings. We did that many times last year.
Yes, I, yes, I was there. Thank you very much. Alright, so counseling services.
We've worked hard this summer to really uplift our advisory program. We're planning some, some good events and strategies. And I think the social emotional learning program that we're working with Eric Mann on, he'll work with the staff on, on Friday. I think we, we're in better places now with that and the training that all the teachers will have, you know, before school opens. But the school counselors are available for students and parents as needed. And, and I think we've got a good team in place.
And, you know, as outlined in our section, we do the parent, student, and staff student survey perspectives. And we did that last year for the students and staff and parent perspective. So we'll have a chance to kind of compare and also look at individual students and see who needs some more support. And, you know, we know from last year what students struggled emotionally because of COVID. So we can also, you know, have a little bit of a head start in that respect, to at least be able to say, we got to watch out for a little Joey.
Anyone have any questions on the counseling services section?
No, just when Anne had said students and parents, and I just kind of refreshed my memory, looked at it. And there's also support for staff, just so the staff who's on the call here on the Zoom, if they haven't read it yet, there's also support because staff needs it too.
Yeah, absolutely.
The school board, I mean, could we come in too? There are days we need it.
Jim, questions on the counseling services section? Julia, questions?
No, thank you.
I'm actually good with that section as well.
Yeah.
You want to move on to curriculum?
So, Ian?
Alright, so again, I just want to point out that there'll be more opportunities for more assessment, again, because of that skill set intervention time. I think that's going to be critical. After the training today, especially with KTL, we did advanced word study, and it was, it was excellent training. And I think our teachers, even though they may teach high school, are seeing that there's, there's the need to really have kids break down some of their words, and that will be part of their assessment. So it was very good training. We have the two interventionists, and we're going to try to really personalize learning for the kids who, who have either a non-traditional type of learning strength or a traditional learning strength, whatever they need. And we hope that band will continue, the instrumental program will continue with kids six feet apart. There's an outside area that they can use. So I'm thinking that the curriculum should continue as much as possible normally.
Joe, you know, I don't know if you want me to run through it, but, you know, outline the day. We're going to be doing a, a more typical day where the specials will happen. And, you know, the, the exposure to the specials teachers will be greater. But having been vaccinated and wearing masks, then I think, you know, that risk is mitigated.
Ollie, questions on curriculum?
Yeah, my only note was, because I know last week I had mentioned about, you know, the band and chorus and then those activities, because, and so I'm glad to hear that it will be hopefully starting up at the elementary, since we didn't have that last year, using the same special masks and everything that the middle school band director used. But one other piece in the state guidance, because that's where I saw that part, was indoor phys ed was also included in the state guidance as a high-risk activity because you're breathing heavy. Now, I know the gym is big, but just so that's on the radar too, to make sure.
Um, I think we're going to try to address that with the use of outdoor learning spaces. Most phys ed classes right now in the gym are unbearable because it's so hot anyway. And I, and I know that the teachers will try to take the kids outside as much as possible. And there are low-impact activities they can do, so your, your aerobic rate isn't so high. And, and so I think that's a plus too. And I think that we have skilled teachers who can handle that.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, because it's all mentioned in the same sentence in the state guidance. So it's like all encompassed in there. That's all.
Jim?
And ELOs, how are we going to handle that?
That's the next section.
That's the next section.
So we do, and I'm not sure, Karen, are you available?
Well, do we want to finish curriculum first and then go to ELO?
Okay, I'll cover that.
Did you have any questions on curriculum?
No.
Julia, anything on curriculum?
No, it looks great. Thank you.
Alright, and I'm all set with curriculum too. So now we can jump into ELO.
And Karen would, would speak to how we're going to mitigate issues relative to ELOs.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so we have several students that have signed up for ELOs. And right now, our plan is that students will need to follow the individual business, their policies. Most businesses that I've talked to are asking what our policy, what we're going to be, be asking of them. But some have their own very strict policies. So we're asking students to follow that. Students that go in the vans will be, of course, wearing their masks while they're in the vans. We don't have, usually we have no more than four kids on the van at once, and that includes the students that are going to WRCC. So they'll be, they'll be in the same boat as, as the ELO students. And the students that, the other students that take themselves to ELOs, you know, they'll, they obviously ride by themselves. So the, the transportation piece will be as, as indicated in the plan. But in terms of placements for students right now, all of the placements that I've set up so far are all accepting our students. There are some that, students that are coming down the pike that are, we haven't set up sites for yet. And there may be some places that we just won't not be able to send them, given their policies. So, for instance, the nursing home at one point has said, yes, they'd take a student. I think that's now going to change. So we won't be able to send students to those kind of places, but we'll look for other opportunities for them in other areas in the field. So we're going to play it one student at a time and just try to individualize it and make sure that students are following whatever, whatever guidelines each individual business has.
Ollie, questions?
Nope.
Jim?
I'm good now.
That answered your question. Julia, do you have any questions on the ELO stuff?
No.
I'm good there too as well. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
We kind of lumped field trips in with the other co-curriculars. I mean, you can kind of move past that one?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, so then we're on to the instructional model.
Alright, so at the middle high school, instruction will be in-person, onsite, five days a week. However, we've carved out some time this week in case we have to develop a plan, a pivot plan, so to speak, in the event that there's a mandate by the governor, whoever, that we have to close. Like, for instance, if we had to close for two days, we want instruction to continue. We want to be ready for that. So the teachers will have a pivot plan in place by the end of the day, Friday.
Joe?
And as I said, in-person instruction and a focus on the essential learnings that teachers are going to be identifying to make sure, like, kids are ready for the next grade or for whatever, you know, something that's going to be used over and over again. Of course, at the elementary level, there's many foundational skills that are clearly needed to be able to do that. So kind of going to a simpler approach would be the, the main goal. And also can, you know, like Anne said, developing a pivot packet will be important to do so that if we did have to be out for a little while, we could do something with that. So we'll be working on that as well, something that we did last year anyways, because we didn't have as much flexibility with the technology.
Ollie? Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne, were you going to talk about districts?
So the, the district options are options we've always had available or had for years. One is the homeschool option. We're certainly for, in unique circumstances, that's something that students might consider. And our homeschool coordinator, Andy Oreo, has a packet that we would send to the family and she would answer questions. But there's also V-Lax, which last year the state supported, and this year, to my knowledge, they have it. So there's some conversation about how that might work, but I think Ian will be taking that one case at a time and talking to those parents about that option.
And we are very grateful to have the V-Lax option. For instance, a student wants to take something like oceanography. We don't offer that, but they could do it online during the school day. We accept their credit. So there's a lot of flexibility with V-Lax. You don't have to un-enroll from school and re-enroll in V-Lax unless you feel that's the best plan for you. So some kids take advantage of both, and we accept their credits. So some kids take advantage of both and we accept their credits.
Holly, questions?
Nope, Anne and Joe answered. My first question was maybe I have the pivot plan, like what that was. So it's basically teachers are coming up with that this week.
You know, how, how is this going to work for me? How's it going to work with my students and how will I communicate it now to parents so they know too?
Yep. And thank you for adding, I know last time I said, I'd like to see added, you know, like spell it out about homeschooling, that's a different animal than remote learning. So I think that's really spelled out really well in here. So thank you. That's all I had.
Jim, questions? No, but Julia?
Good, thank you.
And I think my quick, I actually quite a lot of pivot plans slash remote stuff. We had a lot of remote learning, so I think that answered that that's kind of under development. And one of my questions is going to be, does, you know, does the staff know that this is a possibility? But apparently they do if they're coming up with what they've got to do.
It's on their revised agenda for Friday.
All right, so that answers those questions from down here. I don't have any other questions. Do we want to jump over to nursing services here?
Dawn?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but he, Sam is, Sam's called in from vacation tonight and they're all, he's wondering if you're all set with any questions for the sports.
Did we cover what we need to cover with sports when we did the co-curriculum?
Yeah, my, my two questions were asked.
Yes, I know that's a separate agenda item, but if it's already covered, then it's already covered.
Yeah.
Jim, are you good with that? Julia, you good with that?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm good with that as well. So Sam, if you want to continue your vacation, please have a good time.
Thank you, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right, so nursing services?
So we do have Elise and we're, we're basically providing the nursing services with the overflow room in case we have an issue where we need to isolate. But we do have an appendix B where we go into detail relative to nursing option or the protocol. So I guess I'd ask Elise to address that if she's available.
Yeah, she's there.
Hi there.
Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes. I just, what I did is I made that form last year and got it approved by the school district. That's in appendix B, the beginning form. I forget, I forget what the headline is. It's like dismissal form.
Yeah.
COVID-19 dismissal. So every time that I sent a student home, I would send them home with that paperwork and then like underline or circle the symptom or symptoms that the student had. And I'll be doing that again this year. The number one recommendation is just to keep ill students out of the school. So that'll be the plan. And I know it's hard on parents to keep the kids home. But the plan will be to keep students that are ill, even if we think it's a cold, they'll have to get COVID tested. If they don't get COVID tested, we have to assume that it's a positive test and they have to be out for the quarantine period. And then the students that are, that call out with attendance, we will follow up with those families as well. And some of the families, I email them that form and let them know that their student needs to stay home or get COVID tested. And that was the protocol that we followed last year. So it'll just roll over into this year as well.
Questions, Holly?
No, my only question on that was the part where it, at the end where it talks about contact tracing and it says quarantine of an entire classroom will no longer be conducted. Does, do you mean by that, that just as a matter of, you know, the process, the whole classroom gets quarantined? But if it's a case of, there's a couple, you know what I mean? Like a bunch of kids in there, maybe more than one test positive or just the way they were. I mean, it's possible, right? But it's just not as, that this is our policy, one case and they're all quarantined.
They're written quite differently this year. And so close contacts, what we looked at as close contacts last year won't be dismissed from school anymore or be sent into a quarantine period. Only household contacts will be in a quarantine period. And that information is also in the packet. There's three, I think it's like under quarantine and then self-observation and then tested positive for COVID-19.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to check the links out, so I apologize about that, but. So you're saying like a close contact, you, that kid would be in school the next day?
Right, so a close contact now, but this is from the state. It's not anything that we've come up with. But the state says now if you're a close contact, so say, you know, you're sitting next to Sean today. He finds out he has COVID-19, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, we are just going to monitor yourself for symptoms and continue throughout the day, continue through on with your life. If you do get a COVID-19 symptom, then you start quarantine then and then you'd go and get tested.
Yeah, I mean, I know, we know, and we said we would follow the state guideline. And if they're loosening their guidelines in order to keep people in school, which is obviously what they're doing, because you know, but I, and that's what we'll go, what I, you know, I'm fine with going, I'm not fine with it, but because that's what we said we'll follow, I'd go with it. But I'm just nervous at the elementary school because none of our students are vaccinated. So to have, to have, you know, somebody sitting three feet and, you know, maybe even closer and, and be next to some kid who just tested positive, that's kind of scary, but.
So someone that tested positive won't be in school, they'll be?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying the kid next to, I don't know.
I get, I get it if they, if they were, if we didn't know the day before. But those are the new guidelines. And that's also really, really why we need this mask, the mask, the mask thing to pass because it's so important that we have some of those precautions in place. So that'll be the three feet distancing, the mask wearing, the disinfecting, the, you know, cohorting will still be so, so important because we're trying so hard to keep the students in school.
Yeah, it's just going to be tough. I mean, I'll probably ask questions about it every month when we talk about it. It's a, it's just a different way to wrap our heads around what, you know, we, as things are changing, but. All right, thank you. That, that, that's a very good explanation. I totally get where you're coming from, so.
Thanks, Holly.
Yep.
Jim, questions? No. Julia, questions?
My only comment is, so we are going to close household contacts of someone. So siblings will be quarantining as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
And my questions from last week were answered in appendix B this week. So thank you very much for appendix B.
Yes. I want to say thank you, by the way, to everyone for really, in such short notice, coming back with all the detail that I personally, I think we all had trouble missing last week. So this has just been a huge help, so thank you.
All right, outdoor learning spaces.
So as a district, you know, fortunately in Hisdale, we have outdoor learning spaces around many more than I think most. And with the gazebo that we're able to use, with the outback at the elementary school, you know, with the fields that we have adjacent to the building, the courtyard at the middle high school, we do have a lot of access to outdoor spaces. So I don't know if Anne or Joe have talked to the teachers yet about how they might incorporate those in their lessons, but I know as far as our commitment is to maximize the outdoor spaces.
We have lots of teachers who love to go outside. They use the pavilion for Spanish class. I mean, so it's not just phys ed. It's, you know, sometimes they'll walk down and do a nature walk down by the river looking for the eagles. So there's a lot that they can observe and that's science type of. So anyway, we, we encourage people, if you need to go outside, go outside. Some of our best field trips have just been to go up to Pizca. For instance, Lit on Nature will sometimes go up there because it's a great place to, you know, look at nature and reflect and write poetry of all things. So I mean, we've always used the outside. Yeah.
All right. And while I haven't, just after vacation, so I haven't had a chance to talk to people about outside learning. But just from experience, what we, I think the most effective use we had was having a read alouds combined with mask breaks. So you're kind of being able to combine both, you know, getting two things done where the kids are hearing a nice story and they're also being able to have that chance to remove their mask. So that's, that's one of the most effective things that I think we've done.
Holly, questions?
Nope.
Jim?
Just the outdoor learning space, if that one caused any burden on the custodial staff, right?
It hasn't in the past. I don't foresee it being a problem, even when we had kids in the years past eat lunch out in that courtyard by the cafeteria. We had a trash can there, the kids would clean up after themselves. So I don't, I don't see it being a problem for the custodial staff.
Julia?
So thanks.
And I know last year I, you know, had asked the town administrator and the select board about, you know, the pavilion and all that. They were very supportive of sharing outside spaces with us. If we think we're going to be using them on a, like super regular basis, just let them know. Because sometimes they book that for, you know, other events. And those eventually usually are on the weekends and stuff like that. So it shouldn't be a conflict. But if we think we're going to use the pavilion and stuff like that, we should just give them the courtesy of, you know, hey, we're going to be doing this, is that still okay? And, but they've been very, very supportive of, of sharing the outdoor spaces because they also see the value in having that ability to the kids. All right, remote learning?
So last year, our teachers, beyond belief, they were able to manage an asynchronous learning environment. I'm not sure, you know, it probably disadvantaged some of the students in the classroom. They have so much, you know, as far as distractions, but they managed very well and we're proud of them. But this year, we're really focusing on in-person classroom, at least until or if things change. And then we may end up with whatever model we have to end up with. Obviously, with the money that's come through the Recovery Act and the Rescue Plan, the expectation is that we're going to be able to keep students in class, in person. Whereas maybe last year, we didn't have the funds to do everything we could now. So we're going into it with the idea that we're going to manage this in person without the asynchronous learning. And I think the commitment to our parents that we can keep students safe. I know, you know, I've read in many studies that the students were less likely to get COVID in school than outside of school. So there's all of that, you know, I'm, I'm not an infectious disease expert, but I do believe we can keep students safe if we follow our protocols and we're committed to the protocols.
Holly?
No, my questions were already answered with other pieces, so.
Jim? I'm good. Julia?
I'm good, thank you so far.
And my questions were answered with previous sections as well. Don't forget.
I'm sorry, I do have one question on the remote learning piece. And that was just that, that students will, who are quarantined, will have two days for each day of absence to complete essential work. And that teachers will be available on their return. Is it going to be possible for them to get packets while they're out on quarantine? So they don't have to wait till they get back to try to stay up to date, plus catch up all this missing work?
Yeah, we normally send work home at this point in time. If somebody in the family usually pick it up or we'll leave it outside for them. Yep.
Same for ATS.
Okay, great, thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure, because the way it's written says two days for each day absent upon their return. So I just want to make sure we were going to make that available to them.
Yep, sounds like we are.
Okay.
All right, 504 and medical accommodations.
So I know Patty's online, new director of student services, and she could probably speak to any questions. I think generally speaking, we will provide any accommodation under law that's necessary. In a 504, certainly there will be a medical, there'll be medical accommodations that we'll have to manage with the special needs, with the services we provide. Then there are some issues around parents wanting services but not wanting the, the regular in-person learn. So that, that might be complicated. Patty, is there anything you want to add to that conversation?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, yeah, what we'll be doing is that we'll just be doing it on an individual basis. If, and it will be based off a basically medical documentation from the doctor saying what, what the medical concern is and what, and why. If it's because they're medically fragile, then we, then we would be setting, you know, we would be following the line and we would be providing them FATE. It would not be asynchronous link learning. It could be tutoring. It could be doing related services through like a remote set, a remote thing or setting up a kind of almost a sterile, sterile room in one of the classrooms, one of the buildings to have them come into. It's going to be all on an individual basis. If, you know, let's just, for a scenario, if, you know, somebody comes in with a documentation saying that they cannot use, they cannot use masks. If the school board, you know, says that it's going to be masked, then it's going to be an individual, individual plan where they will be not coming into school but receiving FATE.
Holly, questions? No? Jim? Julia, questions?
No, thank you.
I am good on this section as well. Thanks, Patty. All right, social emotional supports.
So we have used both the Recovery Act and Rescue Plan money to help support an initiative we've had going for several years, our behavioral support system, supports that we're putting in place. But given that SEL, that social emotional learning is such a huge focus, given the impact of COVID on our students' social emotional learning and social and mental health, we're putting a lot of effort into that. In fact, we start, I guess, Anne, month, is it Monday?
Monday.
With our staff, it's most of the PD day that will be Eric Mann, and we're working both with support for, for students and support for staff.
All right, Holly?
Nope, I'm good.
Jim? Good. Julia?
Good.
I'm good as well. All right, special education services.
So we're tip, pretty much doing what we've done, but we've added some ability for parents to remotely access a, an IEP meeting and our remote signature. Patty, is there anything else that it will be different this year in regards to the general continuation of services?
Continuation of services, there, there's not going to be any change. The only change is that, you know, if parents want to come in, we'll be following the visitation, which is kind of coming up in the, in, on, in this form, the policy for that. But we want to keep the platform of having, you know, a Zoom or a virtual platform for meetings. Because honestly, what we found last year was that our attendance, attendance for special ed meetings was incredible because we gave that option. It was like, I'm going to say, if, if it wasn't 100%, it was 99.9%. You know, we had, we had parents that, you know, because it's such a fiscal, fiscal kind of issue with, with some parents, being able to, you know, take a half a day off, half, taking a full day off to be able to attend a meeting, but instead they can do it during their lunch. You know, we had many special ed meetings, you know, when parents were eating at their lunch in their car, but we were having a special ed meeting in there and fully involved. So I think we're continuing on with that platform, I think is key for the community.
Holly? Jim?
Yeah, I, I know we had said that before and I think that's one, at least one good development that's come out of that.
Completely agree.
Yeah, agreed.
Anything else? No. Julia?
No, I think it's wonderful. I think it's great to increase participation and we should maintain that for sure.
Cool, yeah, I'm good with that as well. All right, are we ready to move on to safety operations? All right, so air ventilation.
So we have improved ventilation, but we had some windows that were problematic in regards to opening. Our director of facilities has invited, we were turned down when we first tried to include it into our S or two. But since then, we've invited a rep from the state who has determined that it's not a project we're looking to fund, but rather individual circumstances where the windows just are not operational and it wouldn't be that expensive to repair. And so it's facilities committee on Friday, the facilities committee, I think, and that Jim would concur, agreed to support that request. So we're going to try to write that. So we're going to try to write that into the next round of our S R funding. We do have the MERV 11, those filters are more expensive. We're paying for those out of S R money. And we're doing something with the eye wave technology, but once again, this is a little complicated. And I don't know if Chris, if you have that, know a little bit more about that than I would is.
Just from what Sean has briefed me on what the filters are actually good for, how often that, that they are frequently being checked and changed as needed. And he's trying to keep up the speed on the ventilation system as well as installing variable speed units just to help cycle air and at what rate. I know there, we had an issue with that this summer. So it's just to try to keep the building operational is with good air quality.
All right, Holly?
No, I'm good.
Jim?
I'm good.
Julia?
I'm good. Thanks.
I'm good as well. All right, so arrival and dismissal times.
And I think we'd be first on this.
Again, last year we found that the two openings, you know, for parent drop off at the gym and pick up at the gym was so much better because of traffic twelves. So we're going to keep that this year and have buses, student walkers and drivers just use the front entrance. So the pickup and drop off times will be the same. I think we're, we're, we're hoping that parents like that as well.
Joe?
So we're going back to a more traditional approach. It was very popular the way we did it. But I, I think that given that we're not required to mask outside, that we can go back to having the parents in the, going through the loop, you know, and, and around the back and the buses be in the front. And that will logistically aids us in that when the students enter through the cafeteria door, they can get their breakfast and go directly to their homeroom where they'll be having breakfast. One thing that my staff pointed out to me that I would ask that we put into the plan is the actual arrival time. Cause I said breakfast ends at eight, eight thirty-five, but I would like to add right before breakfast ends at eight thirty-five. That arrival, you know, students will begin being supervised at eight fifteen. That's all in the past, that's always been our time and last year that was our time too. Yeah, and then breakfast ends at eight thirty-five. It's kind of in the middle of the, of the description there. So, you know, we'll, we'll have a little bit of logistics in the cafeteria dismissal time in terms of keeping the students apart as much as possible. But the other thing I had thought about, and I didn't mention it the other day to anybody, but it came to me in my dreams was to encourage parents to bring their children to school if they can, rather than ride the bus. Because I do think that's, it adds, it makes things easier because we don't have as many kids on the bus. So I don't know if, you know, nobody else has heard that yet, but I wanted to see how everyone felt about encouraging parents to drive their children to school.
Molly?
Nope, I, I like Joe's explanation of his whole plan here because I was wondering why the switch back, but it makes perfect sense. Like we planned it. Sounds good.
Jim? Julia?
I think it's great. Thanks.
The only other thing about the switchback is in dismissal time, school street was getting a little bit unsafe. We had a lot of, we had a few near misses. I wouldn't say a lot, but we had near misses and accidents because of the vehicle traffic on school street versus being stopped and parked in the loop and then going back to their car.
So my questions on this, so, yeah, at the middle high school, so kids can come in at seven thirty and they're going to be in the cafeteria. I know there was some discussion if we're going to go to classrooms early. Ever heard how that fleshed out?
The, the union wanted the negotiating team to work with them on language and apparently that didn't happen. So Mr. Ponce and I have created a really good duty roster.
Okay.
And we're hoping that when teachers see it on Friday, they're going to beg to have the kids come to their room at seven thirty in the morning. Did I, is that recorded?
Yes.
But, but seriously, it is a huge problem to have over 200 kids in the cafeteria in the morning. So we have extra staff in there and they're going to have to be very vigilant about social distancing. Cause we're going to try to put 200 kids in there and keep them three feet apart.
Okay, so I guess my only thing on that is the, the time that the kids get into the classrooms is in the CBA.
It is seven forty-five.
Yeah, yeah. And I know that, you know, I'd seen the email that went back and forth, you know, that it should come to negotiate, you know, the personnel committee and all that. And we never set that meeting. I never heard anything about it, you know, after that. So if that's something that we think we're going to need to do, I would just say that I definitely want to get with the union representatives as soon as possible to work that out.
I would appreciate that and I will relay the message that I know they don't want to negotiate directly with me. They know, I know, I know.
Anyway, so I guess that I would ask, Wayne, can you get with, with Sarah and see if we can set up something sooner rather than later?
Sarah tomorrow. If we're initiating a conversation, I'm sure they'll, they would be willing to sit down and try to work out some issues.
The union has always been really great about working with us. I just want to make sure, because you know, we put, we have the MOU that was put together for last year, but it came really late in the season and I think MOUs really work best when it's at the beginning of the season. So people know, you know, what they're working under and, you know, that, you know, my comfort level is to have that done sooner rather than later.
And I know it doesn't match the letter of the contract, but what I, what I'm doing is, and luckily we have a little bit more support staff, but the support staff are the supervisors from eight fifteen to eight thirty-five in the, in the classrooms. And then at eight thirty-five, that's when the teachers would officially be on duty. Now, obviously the teachers are going to be around the classroom, but it is the support staff that their day starts at eight fifteen and they supervise in the classrooms.
So I guess, you know, my, the only thing there is if, if like you said, if it doesn't match the contract exactly, then if that's a support staff, then we need to open up talks with the support staff union as well. So.
It, it does match the support staff contract, but.
So it doesn't match.
It doesn't match the teachers because it says that students want to the classroom at eight thirty-five.
All right. So if we can add that to the conversation with HFT, that would be fantastic. I just want to make sure that's all spelled out. I want to make sure that, you know, we have the union support right from the beginning.
And let me know because I'm on the committee with the parents, that let me know if they need to.
If we need to do, yeah, okay. All right. So it's, so it's just the teachers. All right. So yeah, so, yeah, so if you can get with Sarah and get some prospective dates, then we'll just do our best to make a meeting work.
So I don't need to get a whole Laura then just.
No, it sounds like it's just the teachers. It's just HFT. Okay, cool. So are we going to have notices going out to parents with these, like basically continuing? And then with going back to the way it was, so they know exactly what we're doing?
In our letter home that went out with the packets last week, we specified what the drop off would be like and even identified which people would be where. So they know who to look for because I'm hoping that people will recognize him in front of the gym when they drop off their students. And thank you for negotiating this because this is one area where most of the teachers feel it's a significant difference in kids behavior. If they come into the school into a quiet room instead of into the noisy cafeteria, makes a huge difference.
Yeah, no, and I have, I have a problem with, I don't have a problem with the teachers getting into the classrooms earlier, but I'm up the teacher in the classroom. So we just need to make sure that we get the language discussion and make sure they're okay with it and then work out whenever we got to work out, you know, with down.
Thank you.
So I, Joy, I agree with your, you know, suggestion that, you know, we can suggest that people, you know, bring the kids to school. I just in a communication, I want to make it clear because I know people can, depending on how things are worded, people can misunderstand that. I want to make sure that they're absolutely know that we're not saying they have to, that it'd be nice if they could. But we do have an obligation to provide buses for elementary. So as long as we're just crystal clear, because I don't want someone saying, oh, well, you're not going to buy busing it. And we have to. So, and then I would simply just ask, since there's a lot of traffic at your building, that maybe we get with cheaper times to see if we can get a detail for dismissal times or some type of presence at dismissal times. If it's going to be dangerous, I would like to see some traffic control there if possible. Great. That's all I have on arrival and dismissal. Are we ready to move on to building sanitation?
Yep.
So we haven't really changed our protocols around sanitation that I'm aware of. We do have a custodian we're paying out of our S R funds and that person, that's their whole responsibility is maintaining that sanitation. But I would ask Ian or Joe, if there's something I'm not aware of as far as additional sanitation. We're not backing off of anything I'm aware of.
No, and I was pleased to return from vacation and find that there's touchless toilets in all the bathrooms now. So Mr. Lee took care of that. So I think that will contribute to being more sanitary for sure.
Definitely. Holly, questions?
My only question is about the last sentence where all classrooms will be sanitized each evening with the fogger. And maybe I misunderstood last year, but I thought the fogger was the deep cleaning option. Did we do all classrooms every night with the fogger last year? Was that just when we had a case and it was a deep clean?
I think we just did it when we needed a deep clean, but I checked with, with Mr. Lee on that and he said they'll do it each evening. They'll fog the rooms. So it takes, I think they've gotten faster with it. So it's, and they, I don't think they're worried about replacing the chlorox. I think they've got a good supply. So unless that changes, they, that's what he told me.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Jim? Julia?
Good, thank you.
I am good as well. So let's see cafeteria use.
At the middle high school, the Abby group will bring breakfast to the rooms. They'll bring it to advisory. So kids will have it that first half hour before classes start. And they are in favor of doing that for a couple of reasons. One is primarily they sold many breakfasts last year. I think the kids got a good meal into them. A lot of kids really liked it that way. So they bring it and deliver it. So that's the point of sale. They keep track of who gets it. And we plan to have all lunches in the cafeteria this year with a little different strategy. The first group will be grades eight and nine. We're trying to keep numbers under 100. Then the next group will be six and seven, and the last group will be 10, 11 and 12. We are seeing a surge in enrollment. Grades six and nine are bigger than ever. So, yeah, so.
I saw that in your report.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're hopeful that we can get about 102 kids easily in the cafeteria and keep them three feet apart.
Joe?
So mine's a little confusing, but so you have the times when kids would eat lunch, as I said, breakfast will be in the classrooms. We found eating lunch in the classrooms was a very positive experience last year for, for a lot of reasons. And we'd like to continue that as much as possible, but for K and first grade, they can't make the transition from the cafeteria to the room with their lunches in a, in efficient way. We'll end up eating up too much time of the day. So they will eat in the cafeteria. Alisa and I went over the seating arrangement with the tables that we currently have. And we can spread them out, fitting six kids at a table with a, if they stand their little X mark spots, they'll be three feet away from each other. And then, so for instance, for the other grades like grade two and four, they'd begin the year spread out in eating in the cafeteria. So they'll be, second grade would be eating in the cafeteria and there'll only be 40 kids in there. And their classes would sit at tables together, six per table. And third grade at that point would be eating in the classroom. So they'd be all separated that way. And then the same would go with fourth and fifth grade. So fourth grade would start eating in the cafeteria and all spread out by class, staying in their class cohort. And fifth grade would go to the rooms. And then in the next month, we would switch it so that the other odd grade would be eating in the cafeteria and the even grade would be eating in the rooms. So both groups will get that benefit of, of that classroom community that we found was developing. We found that to be a really positive experience. And then it helps the children to get back into the mode of ready to learn in the afternoon. So I hope that explains it a little better.
Yes, it does. Holly?
Yeah, this is one of the sections I had a couple of questions on. So the part about eating breakfast in advisory, I know, and I mean, and I have several other questions in the next section for distancing about the three feet encouraged, which I don't like the encouraged language. But the state guidance says, you know, three, you know, three feet is what they're recommending more if you are not wearing masks. And so, you know, I just want to say, can we ensure that all classrooms are going to be at least three feet when they have their mask off? Cause I know we had an issue with that last year in, you know, with kids eating and spread happening because they were closer than, than the six feet. So that just makes me nervous.
The advisory classes are 10 or fewer students for the most part. I think in some of the big rooms, there may be more than 10, but there's not many that are 12. So I think they can keep the six feet apart and if the kids are sitting down facing one direction while they eat.
That, that was my other question for both buildings is when they're eating in the cafeteria and also the breakfast, are they going to be facing one direction? They're not going to be facing each other, right? With their mask off. Cause that's, that's not a good scene.
Well, we're gonna, so there'd be a student at the left end of the table and a student at the right end of the table. Tables are much longer than this and then a student in the middle. So they wouldn't be directly across from that.
But there'd be three feet in every, like the kid in the middle is going to be three feet from the other ones. I mean, and they're, then they're loud and it's still three feet, probably not even going to matter because at lunchtime you hear how they are. So they're going to be whatever, but.
They won't be like, they won't be like if Mr. Woolridge was facing me, they won't be.
Or if I was sitting on the other side and like, you know, facing him, that won't be like that. Okay. Yeah, I mean. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't, and I don't think that, that sounds super great, but like you're saying, if it's spread out, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll see. I mean, if it becomes a problem, like if, if, if we have cases, then maybe we reevaluate it.
There's room for 80 in our cafeteria and the biggest class is probably the fifth grade class with 45. So, you know, basically if you think about the cafeteria, we'll have twice as much space as we would need. You know, so we have plenty of room to spread the kids out.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, your building is the one that was probably the most concerning just because nobody, none of the little kids are vaccinated. So that's, yeah, it's the only.
And then like, and then like Ann said, in the, in the breakfast time, it can be, you know, it's definitely a concern that second and fourth grade have two classrooms. So they have 20 kids in each class, but they will be facing in the same direction while eating.
Yeah.
Breakfast ends and then they put it all away clean and then they start their morning meeting. So we'll be distinct enough. I hope that their masks are back on as soon as they're done eating.
Yeah, okay. That was, those are my questions. So thank you.
Okay. Jim? Julia?
Good, thank you.
I'm good with cafeteria stuff as well. All right. So distancing.
So we have the three feet minimum whenever possible, but then as we spelled out earlier, for those special programs, situations where students may be expelling more volume of air and possibly droplets, we're increasing that whenever we can.
All right, Holly?
Yeah, I just, I think the way it's worded, encouraged to maintain three feet whenever possible is a little too wishy washy. I mean, I understand there's going to be instances of course where it's not, but I, I, I would like to see, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I would like to see some kind of language that would be stronger than encouraged, that would make it like three feet's the norm. With a few exceptions, if, you know, here there has to be, you know, kind of a thing. So that's my thought about that.
Do you have a suggestion, a language?
I, I mean.
Do you want a minute to think about it?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, maybe like, yeah, however it was, I mean, how did we say last year, like required and, but, but to know that there are instances, you know, sometimes a parent has to get closer or sometimes like if there's a classroom where it's not quite possible. I mean, everyone's wearing masks and they have to wear them appropriately, especially in a classroom where there's like 20 some, 30 kids or something. But I don't know, I, I leave it to, I don't know. I didn't think of it an alternative. You're putting me on the spot. No.
I'm sorry.
Anybody feel free.
Expected to maintain three feet?
Yeah, or like you said, required, somebody said required, but I mean, but then also there's that, you know, knowing that there's. Yeah, or like you said, required, somebody said required, but I mean, but then also there's that, you know, knowing that there will be times. But it's just so it's the norm rather than the, let's try to do it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Jim? Julia?
I'm good. I think required would work. It would read students and staff are required to maintain minimum of three feet physical distance whenever possible. So it still speaks to the fact that there's going to be occasions when that's not, but it's a little bit more strongly worded than encouraged. So I think, I think required is, is a good verbiage for there.
And I'd be okay with that.
Yep, me too. Yeah, yeah, and the whenever possible covers the.
When it's not.
Yeah, the exception, yeah.
Exactly. All right, we good on that then?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Julia. That was helpful.
All right, so face coverings.
So we, you know, we encourage the face coverings indoors as the CDC guidance suggests, but we did put in something about, you know, that there will be courses, speech and language, for example, music, where there may be special face coverage, especially I know speech therapy came up. There may be some circumstances where we will have masks that are unique. There'll be face coverings, but maybe wouldn't call it the typical mask. So we don't want to get kind of caught into that, but we will individualize and personalize this as we do everything in this deal. But at the same time, you know, our commitment is the face cover.
All right, Holly?
Um, the only thing I had on that is, and you know, what we said about, we were looking at the matrix and, you know, other districts are doing the same thing where if, you know, if things drop down to acceptable levels, we won't have math. How does that impact the students at the elementary school, like? Because they're not vaccinated. I'm not sure how other districts are addressing it. I've heard people talking about it both ways that, you know, sorry, that, you know, because they, they're all not unvaccinated, so.
We did include a matrix that we could use to begin to have a conversation when things get, you know, in a minimal line, which we're far away from in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
No county's close. So, but at the same time, if things, if all of a sudden next week, we had, you know, 1% positivity instead of a couple hundred cases in Jessup County, we had 20, I mean, we would, we would encourage a review of our base mass policy.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it's really not going to change before our September meeting. So we could also look around and see if there's any language in other plans about elementary students.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be, I think, I think every month we'll be revisiting this, but I think to revisit the mask issue relative to elementary in September would be, would be great. And give Joe a chance to look around and do some comparative reviews.
Yeah, yeah. And Joe and Elise get, you know, have them, you know, come up, you know, just talk it through and get some ideas. Okay. Cool.
You good?
That's all I had. Yep.
Jim? Julia?
I have to say, maybe I'm not following the elementary school thing, but I wholeheartedly believe that our mask mandate needs to be district wide. And that it would be very challenging to have one mandate in the middle high school and another one in the elementary school. Because although they cannot be vaccinated in the elementary school, we probably, I'm assuming, have a population that are not vaccinated in the high school. You're going to have siblings where one kid's in the high school and doesn't have to wear it, and they do in the elementary school. Strongly believe that our mask mandate needs to be district wide in a school, in a school district our size.
And my only thing on that, see, I am, I appreciate that some of the stuff was added for the mandate. I have no problem with requiring it, requiring masks. Like I said, I appreciate the fact that we are mentioning mask breaks, specialized coverings, special circumstance, you know, all of that. So I'm, I'm, and I really like the matrix that we included in appendix B.
Yeah, B.
Yeah, I'm good with that. All right, hand hygiene.
This is the same model that we've been using. And we have first, the first bout of the CARES Act money. I think we have all the hand hygiene material substances that we'll use for many years to come. But, you know, I hope I'm right on that, that it's not all of a sudden. But we have, we have it everywhere and we keep thinking about places we can add it to make sure it certainly is effective as anything with the kids for young kids. And if you have anything that you've done between, you know, June and now?
No, it's, it'll be the same options as last year, the bottle filling station that the class donated. And I forgot what year that they installed that. It's three years ago. The kids love that water station. It's nice cold water. Everybody uses it and it's a location that we can supervise. So nobody, nobody fools around or damages it. Not that that would happen in our building. So, I mean, we really want kids to drink a lot of water, so encouraging them to bring their own water bottles. But the nurse always has water bottles if somebody needs one.
You have filling stations at the elementary school?
Yeah, those worked out really well. So we're, we're sticking with those and that eliminates the, the need for, you know, cleaning them every hour or even more.
Holly, questions?
Oh, I'm good.
Jim? Julia?
I'm good, thank you.
I am good as well. All right, playground.
The playground students wouldn't be required to wear masks, but they would be expected to be three feet. You know, that's going to be complicated at the elementary school with some of our younger students, but I think we managed it last year.
Well, yeah, we'll use this, probably use the same model, sorry, when we're on the playground where we limit the, to like the class cohort. So they're not, because once they get up on top of the structure, it's very difficult to keep the three feet thing. But as long as they're in the same classroom, we'll at least have the cohort managed. And so we did things a little differently last year when we did open up the playground and we'll continue that process to keep it as safe as possible. And like, you know, do, well, the monitors will be doing their best to make sure that they're, they're spaced apart.
Holly?
No, I'm good.
Jim? Good. Julia?
I am good. I'm also going to be back in 30 seconds.
Okay.
I forgot to plug my computer in. I'll be right back.
All right. Yeah.
On distancing, we have students and staff are now required is what we changed it to. But down here, we have students will be expected. Can we use the same language?
I mean, that's outside, though. Rather than inside. Oh, no, no, it's more of a question. I'm just, you know, I mean, it's more of a, should we try to be consistent? Yeah.
But you're right, that is outside.
Yeah. Yeah, but.
No, but that was a good catch.
Both are really good points.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And I'm fine with playground stuff. All right, screening.
So this is a, an area where we are changing the model. Last year, other than the very cold weather where they didn't work, I think we did a good job monitoring, screening students as they entered our building from buses or cars. But we really didn't find that it was an effective way to determine whether there were symptoms. So we're discontinuing that based, and I think Elise could speak to that as well if you'd like.
Hi there. Yeah, I do, I agree. I can speak to the elementary school. I know that we did not catch one ill student with the thermometers. Every student had, maybe they came to me with symptoms, but the thermometer is just, it wasn't, it didn't work out so well. And parents did an excellent job with monitoring their own students at home and calling with any questions. So I encourage them to continue doing that. A lot of parents called before school or the day, the day before, saying, my kid's a little sick, what should I do? They have a little bit of a runny nose, and I really encourage parents to do that because I can help talk them through it.
All right, Holly?
Nope, I think most districts' plans that they put out there eliminated screening.
Jim? Just really, with the new model, how would that affect the, the students who come in for the, for school program?
So we'll handle it. Basically, this way that we handle it this summer, I would believe in that if we identify a student who has some symptoms, they would go to the isolation area. I get in at seven o'clock each morning and I'd be in the isolation area until the nurse arrives. Then we call the parents and let them know that little Johnny got dropped off with a runny nose and cough and he has to be picked up.
Yeah. Julia?
I'm good, thank you.
I am good as well. All right, so stay at home.
So this can be problematic occasionally, but we've listed under appendix B what the nurse's guidance suggests around stay at home. So if there's fever, cough, shortness, chills, fatigue, muscle body ache, headache, loss of taste or smell, sore throat, runny nose, nausea, or diarrhea. Those sometimes pretty common symptoms among very young students. But those are the symptoms that we would determine that we would begin the process. Is there any change from last spring, Elise, to that list?
There's not a change, no.
Sorry, Holly?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So since we aren't going to have screeners, I remember last year we had, the screeners had, you know, the list. They knew what students, if they had, they might not have known that they were out for COVID symptoms or they were out quarantining. But they had a list of students who they knew to make sure went to the nurse rather than to advisory or to their classroom. So if we aren't going to have, and a few still slipped through, as we know from last year. So how, how are we going to handle, like, the teacher in advisory or at HES, the classroom teacher? How are they going to know if a student came back in before they had, had their proof of their negative? You know what I mean? They like to say they came back and they didn't have a negative COVID test. They just come back.
Yeah, so last year I started a, like a Word document and shared it with, and shared it with all the teachers. And they were able to see if, so to start, I printed off every morning and gave it to each adult that was at the door. So they were able to screen at the door. If a student came through, the teacher was able to pull up the document and see. It was a live document and I would, you know, as test results came in, I would delete students. And they were able to see if their students on that list or off that list. And there was nothing but a name. And that was all the information that the classroom teacher needed. So if they read the name on the list, the, the student would automatically be sent to the nurse's office. If the student was on the list yesterday, but no longer on the list, then the student can be in the class. And that's, that worked out really well.
What about at the, yeah, you're going in?
Similar to last year, I think nurse alarthritis will give us a list each morning. And Chris will be at the gym. I'll be at the front entrance and we'll have that and our, our backup person, if one of us is out, would have it too. So that's what we did last year and that was very effective.
But you were stopping each kid last year, like if there were.
But see, we, for instance, with the parent drop off, it's like one kid at a time. So the parent drops a kid off before the next car pulls up. And with the bus, it's the same thing. I'll be at the bus and kids get off one at a time. So if a student shows up that's on my list, wait a minute, you want to stay here, I'm going to walk into the nurse. So I think we have a system that will work very well.
That is all I had.
Jim? Julia?
All set.
And yet again, appendix B took care of my question, so.
Yes.
All right, so transportation.
So we continue to have the availability of the buses for our students. Thankfully, you know, we're fairly contained and we managed that pretty well last year. We do have seating charts, but I don't know if there's been conversation about any changes this year. Nothing to my knowledge, Joe or Anne. So I think we're just following the same plan. And I do think we encourage parents to drive if possible.
Right.
We know that's not always possible.
All right, Holly?
Nope, my question was answered at the beginning.
I'm good. Julia?
Good.
And I am good as well. So visitors.
So we will allow visitors. It was much of the year last year where we didn't. So we'll have visitors with masks and appointments will be expected just so that we can control the ebb and flow. And obviously that will, you know, we may make some modifications each month when we find things that are not working as well as we hoped. Or maybe some things we need to do. Recommend those changes.
I'm good. Julia?
All good.
Right, I am good as well. All right, so is there anything else, Wayne, on the, on the plan?
No, I think we've made a couple of modifications. And if the board is good, maybe Anne could get that out just in case there is an edit we miss tomorrow. And if so, if we're okay, then the board could communicate that to the community. I don't think the checklist needs to go to the community.
No, no, no.
Yeah, it does have to be posted on the website as part of the Esser language. But the plan, I think the community would be very interested in that plan. And questions could, you know, go to the tenant's office or the principal's office, depending on the nature or the nurse's office.
So what does the board want to do for citizen comments? I mean, I know it's not on the agenda, but did you want to just run through? There's a couple dozen, is it 20, well, 25? I think you're one of them.
I think we should.
All right, all right. So Anne, you want to run through and do some citizen comments?
Yeah.
You're going to limit it? We have a third of the people that were, or half the people that were here last time. So, I mean, we can go a little bit longer than a minute if we have to, but.
I think a minute's plenty.
Okay, I'll just start. Elise, Elise, do you have anything else you want to add?
All set, thank you.
Patty, do you have anything?
All set, thank you.
Brittany Young. Sarah Burgess.
Hi, I will, Sean, just you know, I will get together with Teresa and Donna Foster and we will get dates as soon as possible.
Awesome. And I'll do whatever, I will do whatever I got to do to change my schedule to make that meeting. Because I, I mean, do need, I think that's important that we take care of you guys as soon as we can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Donna, do you have anything?
I'm just thanking everybody for the, the detail that was added to it and the hard work that went into it. Because I know this isn't easy, but it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Anne? Baba, Baba Dat? Jen Taggart?
No, thank you.
Paula, you want to just ask your question that you have the chat?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My question was just, we had an open house planned Monday evening, the night before school. I think it was 5:30 to 6:30. Is that something that can still happen? I mean, it'll be a large amount of people, but, I mean, visitors are allowed. Could we, could we still hold it only because the last year's kindergartner is moving to first, their parents have still not seen the building? So, so I was just wondering if that's something that could still be worked out. Thanks.
You want to just, just take a second, was, address that? Do you want to go through the rest of comments first?
I think we did address that.
All right, so thoughts, Joe?
You know, it's a good point that Paul made, it may be very crowded, but also, like she said, first grade parents have never really seen the the space that their kid has been learning in, other than through a, a computer screen. You know, I think if we, we're going to have a hard time making sure people are three feet apart. But, you know, if we have the mask policy and make it clear that don't come if you have symptoms, I'm hopeful that we could, we could be able to do that for that hour. And if not, maybe just to limit it to the K and one students and any new families that have never been here before. So, I don't know, those would be other options.
Wayne, any thoughts or suggestions?
Well, I think the K one, if we, I think that would definitely cut down and it takes care of the need relative to those people who are so unfamiliar with the surroundings that when their student comes home, you know, they, they don't have that. you know, they don't have that kind of spatial reference, so I would advocate that we do K one and new students, but, you know, I'd certainly defer to Joe as far as what the safety issues are.
Paulie?
Yeah, I mean, I, we've all, I think, been to the, been to the open house, it does get super crowded, so I like the idea of K one and new students, and, you know, if we vote this in, we're going to have the mask policy, so they'll, any parent, anybody, anybody in there will have to have the mask, so. So I'm good with that, if, if, if everybody, you know, if the teachers and Joe are okay with amending that.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too, K one, plus the new, the new families. And we said it's going to be for one hour only.
Yeah, I think if we were to do it for just K and one, we could do it like five thirty to six even, would be the kindergarten timeframe, and six to six thirty could be the first grade timeframe, and then the other, you know, new families could, they'd be in a different space, and there's maybe twenty of those, so it wouldn't really be a big issue for them to be in the other parts of the building.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Julia?
Agreed, K one and new families, I think they, I think as long as the mask mandate's in place, that's appropriate.
And I'm willing to agree with all of this. All right, so Paula, did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Leslie? Okay, Leslie Parkinson?
I'm all set, thank you.
Kelly Cruz? Katie Hires?
Excuse me, I do have a couple of questions, sorry.
I'm sorry, Kelly.
That's okay, I wasn't quick enough to unmute, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out that at the high school, kids that use their speech services, they're in a cubby hole by themselves, because we do it online, so they can have their masks off.
Presence learning, is it?
Yeah, so, I mean, so that's good with that. The other question I have is, what do we do if a kid has symptoms at the elementary school and has siblings in the high school? Or is the high school going to be notified? How does that work?
I'll be happy to let you know that Jan and Elise are in constant communication, and so they, they, they do let each other know, and they let the families know. So I, I don't always have to know, but the nurse knows, and she'll call the family and excuse kids when they need to be sent home.
Okay, and just one, one last question, and I probably should know this. Are we going to have a resource officer at the high school this year?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Katie Hires?
No, thank you.
Bonnie Trombley, thank you. Bonnie? Jess?
All set, thank you.
iPhone? McKenzie?
All set, thank you.
April?
I'm good, my questions were answered by the meeting, thank you.
Brian? Evan Haasen? Karen Thompson?
All set, thank you.
Sam?
I'm all set, thank you.
Megan Stone?
I'm all set, thank you.
Laura Kelsey?
I'm all set, thank you very much.
All right, I think that's it.
I think there's only one, the second page. All right, so are we ready to entertain a motion?
Yep, I'll move that we accept the reopening plan with the few amendments that we made.
I forgot Teresa.
Oh, good.
Sorry, Teresa, do you have anything?
I'm sorry. No, I'm good. I want to thank everybody for their thoughtful plans, and yes, we'll be in contact with the negotiation team, and the other thing I just want to mention, because Paula did talk about transition, that we have a very thoughtful plan in place for sixth grade transition. So that's going to be occurring on the twenty-sixth, and letters had gone out in July about that, so we'll be solidifying all of that tomorrow, and I also have some families that can't be in attendance that time, so I'm looking to do a makeup day on the thirtieth, and at that point, we can see maybe if there's other new students in the district, that maybe they can be there as well, because that might be a very helpful thing for any, any other new families who've never been there, and Cody and I had talked about that today, and I'm okay with facilitating that. I just haven't mentioned it to Ann yet, so. My apologies.
Well, she knows now.
She, I mean, I mean, just thinking, like, we were talking about transitions and how it might be helpful for new families, and since I was already doing it for the, some of the sixth graders, and Ann and I had talked about the sixth graders, it might be helpful, because we have a huge influx of other middle school students at this point, and like Ann mentioned earlier, some ninth graders as well, so if we can just, if I'm going to be there and just opening up and doing like basically a brief tour and passing out schedules, I don't mind doing that at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion on the floor to accept the reopening plan with the amendments we discussed today. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I got it.
Yeah, Jim beat you to it.
Fine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Julia, you're an aye?
I'm an aye.
All right, so we're good, and that is effective, is it now?
The mask?
All right. I was prepared.
Well, Ann is like six feet.
Ann's like a hundred feet.
For everybody, so.
All right, cool, so then, let's see, this amendment we posted on the website, we can share it on community connections.
And I'll be sending it out, you know, the message out.
All that, perfect, all right, perfect. Okay, so let's see, we got our reopening plan done, that's awesome. So we didn't ask Jeff if he had any questions? You good? He's in the public, we forgot all about him. All right, so let's see, we incorporated the athletic director stuff into the reopening plan, and then we just have any other business, so.
Do we have to approve the, his plan, though?
Do we have to approve that plan separately?
Do we? Well, you include it with the plan.
Yeah.
Oh, because it's an appendix, thank you. Okay, yes, thank you.
All right, so the only other thing that I have, I believe, is HR had a question about how the board feels about posting some of our open positions on Facebook. How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be, there aren't any other concerns other than just be like posting it on any other website, right? Yeah, or like any of these other places. Yeah, I'm fine with that. The more people we can reach, the better.
That's how I feel about it, too. Jim?
So what about comments? Could we like turn it off?
Right, that's going to be what I asked.
I guess it depends on where, because you're posting on Village Voice, you can, you can turn the comments off on Village Voice. I think, yeah.
He showed me half of it.
Yeah, it's super easy.
I'm okay with that.
Thanks, that's a good question, thank you.
I, I'm okay with it, I'm not a huge fan of using that kind of social media for business purposes, but I do understand the attraction of, you know, of reaching more people. I would say that the stipulation needs that the comments need to be turned off, though, for sure.
So then, we don't need to, we don't need to vote on that, we can just say that, all right. All right, cool, so then, does anybody else have anything?
Nope.
All right, then I just need a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all right, roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
All right, so we are in non-public. Thank you.